Call the meeting to order, we'll have this look to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call of members?
Trustee Malinsky.
Here.
Trustee Connor.
Here.
Trustee Berzak.
Here.
Mary Fettrich.
Here.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the July tenth twenty twenty three meeting?
Simone.
Is there a second? Second? Any corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the July thirty first twenty twenty three meeting?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. And may I have a motion to approve the August seventh twenty twenty three meeting?
Simone.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, that motion carries as well. Presentation of petitions, communications, and general question period for members of the community. As we have members of the community here, we will dispense with that. I'm going to jump ahead on the agenda and go down to Kevin Sterling's presentation. So I'm going to turn it over to you, Kevin. Thanks for coming.
Alright, thank you Janet, thank you everybody for having me. I shouldn't take up too much of your time here, just going over something. I am with a little bit of Robert's help, we've been working on for probably the past, I want to say four months since we've had the ball rolling on it. We're kind of modernizing the day-to-day operations of the water and the sewer plant. As far as like morning rounds, maintenance scheduling, keeping track of all everything, that's been a huge thing. And just, kind of just bringing everything into one general area. The first thing we started with was digitizing all of our daily rounds and eliminating paper. Especially at lift stations because they always get wet, they always, they have blown away in the wind so you lose all your monthly data. So with not having the paper anymore, it's all saved to the cloud, it's all redundantly saved, you can save it on a flash drive, everything. And I do have some, I can kind of walk through. The wastewater plant has the most information probably flushed out on it. And. I can go through each station we have here. So when you come into this program, it is called Ops Control. Welcome by, it's called their plant dashboard, which as everybody knows, we do have two plants here, we have the water and the sewer. And just on this homepage, it shows you if you have any alarms going on, any recent changes, and it also shows you an exact pinpoint location of where each plant would be. Brings up, and actually tells you how many users are using each plant. And it'll tell you how many assets you have, which are just like pumps and any piece of equipment you can add as an asset here. But we can go right into the wastewater plant, and it comes up with the wastewater plant dashboard. And right away, we see all the lift station pump running hours, and just the data log of each one, the main lift stations at least. We've got Main Street, and the first two show daily, the first one shows the daily usage from the day before. And the second one just shows cumulative hours shown on these pumps. And then you go down to Pawcat Lift Station, it does the same thing for that as well. Kind of brings a neat view of all your data, instead of having to go to each lift station to see this data. And spend time at the lift station calculating this out, you just punch it in, and it actually calculates the usage from the day before all on its own. And it presents it in a nice graph like this.
So if a pump failed, you would see that right away?
We would still have to go to it every day. There is the option eventually to get connected. The package that I had the quote for was their basic non-connected package, and it just, you still go to each station every day. Whereas eventually, there is always upgrades available. You could get everything connected via satellite data, any way like that, and you could just get real-time running data of all these pumps, and it would actually tell you when it goes down. But that is a further subscription than what we are currently working with. Right now, we're working on the free, and we're looking to upgrade to the basic. And even just in doing that, it's cutting time in half for a lot of the stuff. Our daily rounds used to take forty-five minutes roughly, just lift stations. Lift stations I can do in about fifteen minutes now. Just because you walk up, unlock the panel, punch in your numbers, and you walk away. You save the workflow in here, and you're done. And what we've done with this program so far is like barely scratching the surface of what the paid subscription actually offers and what we can do with it. A second tab on the dashboard here goes through and tells you, this would be more for like management side, they can see. Or if Janet wants to walk in and see what we did for the day or something, you can see a list and pull up any of the days. Like this is blower hours at the sewer plant. Can see what the air pressure was for the day, the total run hours for each blower. It just gives a good presentation, and this just gives a list of all the data we've inputted and for what day. So you can be like, hey, what did you do this day? And you can pull it right up and show results from that day. But this is one of the, next tabs is the calculations that the system does. When you punch in all your testing for pH, temperature, all the blower records, and sodium illuminant usage, it puts it together in a nice pretty graph. Displays the information when you scroll over it. And it also displays out like it did with lift station pump hours. It compiles it into nice data charts that are easily viewable. That way, even like, let's say, I was gone, and somebody needed to, somebody was missing sodium illuminant, you could see how much is used every day. And gauged on this, you can see the trend for the week, it uses about the same every day, so you could judge that of when barrel links to be changed or when mornings to be ordered. Anybody can just come in here and look at it and see. It gives a lot of visibility as opposed to just handwriting everything and storing it all in a filing cabinet, that wasn't very organized. There's some data that hasn't been input yet, we're working on good ways to display it. And there are certain sections that aren't completely flushed out yet. But these are just your basic dashboards that'll display all the information that we are putting in. Our next heading goes through, and you can actually, each of these, it brings up another asset map, and it actually tells you where Main Street Lift Station is, where the sewer plant is. Gives you a pinpoint dot for Pawcat and for Ashline. Right now, it's just the major lift stations and the sewer plant in here. We do have a few other lift stations that I'll be putting in as like a monthly checkup, because they have been forgotten about, and they don't get checked very often. And I was told that, that they really never checked for the past, who knows how long?
So like, what's, where's one of those?
There's one at the bottom of the hill right here. The house right on the corner. They're not like, anything, we don't record anything, but just a visual check to make sure everything looks good, that they're still accessible. There's one over on, it's a Finney Drive or Finney Ave across the river.
Okay.
In somebody's backyard over there. As far as that goes, in each of these headings, there's actually a picture of each lift station here, so if somebody didn't know our system, they could come in here and actually look. And it does give GPS coordinates for everything as well. And once they're a little bit more flushed out, underneath each one, you will see, like Ashline Drive, there are two pumps, right now it's showing three because it's a generic. But it'll have the pump, what the pump is, the brand, the manufacturer, the serial number, the part number, everything. So that way, you wouldn't have to pull it up and see what's in the hole, not knowing, you can come to this, and you could tell what's in the hole for every lift station. And once it's all recorded, it's all gets put in, and it saves it, it'll actually link to the manufacturer. It'll have all the contact information in there for who you need to call, and everything is just pulled up nice and easy when you go to each one of these. It'll be an asset list for both the sewer plant and the water, water plant. And next section we go into is the media library, which is one of the biggest tools that I'm going to be using as well. It's a place you can literally come in here and upload any document you want. So when we started out, we uploaded our handwritten daily round sheets, and we made them digital off of that. And then on top of just that, you can come in and upload maintenance manuals, users manuals, and a lot of the times, I have found, especially at the sewer plant, where I ask for a manual for something, if it's not on the bookshelf, it was lost in the flood. So there's no record of it, so I'm going through.
Those are famous, that's a famous quote.
Yes, I have found that. And so I've been going through, I've put a couple of them in here so far, like the biggest one we use is the Sension pH Three from Hack, we use it every day. So now if you have any questions on operation, calibration, anything, the manual's already in here. Everything like that, we've also got the centrifuge that we use almost every day, so if anything breaks down, there's parts lists and everything like that. Again, it can be linked to the manufacturer, so you have a number to call right on hand. And this goes for any document you want to upload, anything you think is helpful, like instructions from the lab on how to sample, you can just put it in here. And that way, there's no rifling through a filing cabinet for an hour trying to find one piece of paper. It's all in one localized spot right in front of you. Then we kind of get into the, what we've really been working on, which was digitizing the daily rounds. Before, they were just categorized, was what we're calling workflows. And at the sewer plant, currently, we have ten workflows that get done daily. Or there's two or three that get done every other day at the sewer plant, it just depends on the frequency of when we do it. But before, we're coming in here and just selecting each one and doing it, but now it's kind of nice, we go, I've started to schedule them into a maintenance schedule, so they're actually scheduled for every day. And as you do them, you just go to begin workflow, and when it's complete, it'll actually change the date to tomorrow, and that's when you know it's done. So like, once I complete tomorrow's, it'll move to the sixteenth. So that way, you just go down the list, you do all the ones for the day, and when you're done, it's all saved. And anything else, not just daily rounds, can be scheduled, you can add yearly maintenance for all the pumps, checking the oil, changing the oil, washing them off. Anything that needs to be scheduled can be scheduled in here, and they can be scheduled off of runtimes, they can be scheduled off of like yearly. It's very versatile, it's very smart. There's a lot of conditional things you can do as well. Another place to come in here is just the list of every single data that we've input already is in this spot. So if something needs to be printed out, or if something needs to be downloaded and sent to somebody for a certain day, you can just come in here and look for whatever you want. If you just want to see Ashline Drive stuff, all you do is type in Ashline, and it brings up everything for Ashline Drive that we put in. So it makes it very easy to find, instead of rifling through paperwork. And you could do it the same way when you download it and store it, and on a flash drive, you can organize it that way, and it works pretty well as well. Something we haven't really gotten into yet is smart alarms and other things like that. Eventually, this program can actually take over auto dialers and can bring out, I know right now, I think our auto dialers are about forty, forty-five dollars a month. This can eventually take over that and send email notifications, text message notifications, and they're actually, they don't have a call yet. But in the next quarter of this month, they are adding a call feature that will call you just like an auto dialer would, but for now, they do email and text messaging, which is a nice on top of what we already have. And we can put in manual alarms for now, where it'll tell us for data that we've put in for the day, if something's not quite right, or if it's deviated further than what it should. It'll bring up a message right on the screen as you're putting something in, that says, hey, check something because something's wrong. We haven't dived into this too much, we're actually working with the Aqualogix Skater programming, that will be going in the sewer plant when that's done. And the one that's already in the sewer plant, we're working on actually meshing it with this system.
That was going to be one of my questions, how that Skater program is going to work with this.
It sits on top of it, is kind of how it works, and it sees everything. You can make it so you can adjust things from in here, but as far as what we kind of want to use this program for is just to be able to see everything in one place. Not have to go to each plant individually and check things, I mean, and a lot of the times, the computer program that we have to play around with the Skater, like from here, I could mess with the water plant, but it's a lot easier just to go to the plant and do it. It's nice being at home, and if it pours in the middle of the night, you can pull it up and adjust. And a lot of times, right now, knock on wood, it's just something that, it's just alerting us that, for whatever reason, right now, our big thing is air infiltration. So it really just requires a restart, and that can all be done from your computer. But these, this program, it can anticipate alarms too, and it can say, hey, this, this is already starting to rise, check this before the alarms. It's pretty smart, once it gets linked with the other Skater systems, it'll see everything that it, that the Skater system sees. And it'll read out just like it does at the water plant or at the sewer plant. We're working with Aqualogix right now to get that set up, and once that's set up, we'll be like above and beyond what we've had for a very long time. The only other thing is, there's two separate Skater systems, I'm, we haven't really figured out why it was done that way at the water plant.
Two?
So Aqualogix has their own Skater system, and Wigan has their own Skater system.
Oh, Aqualogix is the tank.
Yeah, Aqualogix does, tanks, wells, and that's pretty much it. Wigan is the filtration unit, so they, Wigan talks to Aqualogix, but they're still separate. So we're trying to figure out how we can overlay both of them in and see everything. So we're working on, we might have to do two separate dashboards for it, but it's, we're, it's in the process of it, and like I said right now, with what we're doing, we're only scratching the surface of what we use it for daily right now. In the pamphlet that I handed out, that is their kind of like sales pitch brochure. And really, the only thing that we've touched on the second page is we've started to do asset management, where we're listing out each individual part, piece, everything at each plant. And getting them all categorized and kind of inventoried. And we're starting to do a little bit of the library, which is getting all your maintenance manuals and everything like that. Operator rounds is really the biggest thing that we've started, and that we're trying to solidify before we go on to anything else. We kind of put in a little bit of stuff here and there to show more up to you, so that way, we have a little bit more data to show. And the alarm management, data monitoring, and maintenance management is what we're going to dive into a little bit more with like beefier maintenance schedules, and making sure everything is kept up with. And being we're a smaller crew, it makes it easier to have something that reminds us, because there's so many things going on, that there's been a lot of things over the years that have been let go and have been forgotten about. And with this, it will not let you forget, it'll text you, it'll email you, it'll say, hey, this is coming up due. You can, you can set the frequency of an alarm coming up, of hey, this is due in a week, a month, whichever. And then their biggest thing, a lot of people these days are worried about cybersecurity, but they have gone through and they have made their program one of the securist Skater overviews that is on the market right now. And that was one of the things that they wanted to make sure that I and everybody else knew, is that all of our data is safe. And the one good thing about the data that we're using is it's all public knowledge data anyways. So that's the only nice thing about it, but they reiterate that it is one of the safest programs on the market at the moment. And another good thing about them is it works on pretty much every device, so it's viewed from a phone. The same thing that's on the computer, you can view it from your phone, I can view it from the iPad that we use at the sewer plant. All the same data is all in the same place, and that's all on our network. So it's only visible to us when we're using it, and it makes it easier when you're going out and doing rounds, you just have your phone or have your tablet, and you just put everything in from there. And that'd be the one thing, eventually getting connected a little bit more, is you could either have a central point like here, and all the data would just be fed to here. Or you can do like, kind of like the radio read of our water meters, you go drive by the situation, and it just uploads the new data. That is the last tag that we have on the top heading here, is all of the data tags, which are every little individual thing that gets put into the workflows that we have to input every day, all of our test results, all of the pump hours, it's just the tab that you go to to make more sections to add. It's more of a, the end user uses this. The guys have been amazing at Ops Control, and they've put a lot of stuff in for me, and they've made things work the way we want them to. They have a, we have a dedicated customer support rep, is what I can call him, twenty-four seven, and he'll either change something or walk me through how to change it. And it's just pulling up the, the water plant, it's the same, same headings, same everything. A little bit more important stuff on the dashboard here, it shows us our high lift pumps, which are where they're sending everything to the distribution system. And off of that, it's where we calculate our chlorine usage. And this just is an instant readout, we have to calculate it, and it's such a wonky calculation to do, that once we put in our daily high lift numbers, it calculates the total runtime, and then it actually calculates the total chlorine usage for the day, day prior in quarts. So like yesterday, we used about five quarts. Does the same thing with well pumps, it tells us how much is coming from each well, or how long each well has, pump has run, and total runtime. And then it tells us wastewater gallons, which is our DEC required number that we have to give them each month. It'll calculate that automatically, it's like a twelve-digit number that we usually have to punch in every day and manually calculate. You just type the number in here and subtract it from the day before. Just being, it's one of the smarter programs, and that's, one of the biggest things is time, because we don't ever have enough time. And this program has saved a ton of time already, just in the little bit we've used it. Like I said, forty-five minutes for rounds now, for lift stations goes down to about fifteen, twenty minutes tops. And it's, leaves a little bit more room in the day to do other things that need to be done.
Plenty to do, for sure.
I have, actually did a lot more with this asset list at the water plant. It'll actually tell you where each little piece is, like there's four little data tags in this back corner, just for the chemical pump room. And it actually shows the three data tags for the well pumps. These actually already have like manufacturer in. And in this section. So if we go to details, it actually tells us, it's an anti-scanal feed pump, the status of it, which would be operational or non-operational. And then serial number of that pump, description of where it is, description of what it does. And then it'll actually have all the data, the model number, the product name, and the company it comes from. And then with that, within this, it actually has the address of the company, the phone number of the company. So you just come here, if you need something with one of our chemical feed pumps, you just go right to it, and can find out what you need from there. That was one that took a little bit of time to call in for. Same thing with media library. Just a couple of the main things we use every day, I've already put the menus in here to show, so that we have them and don't lose them. And I currently did not have this manual at all anywhere. I haven't found it, so I went online and I found it, and put it in here for us to have. Same thing, there's only one daily form that we fill out at the water plant, it's a longer form than some of the ones at the sewer plant, so we just compiled it into one rather than have a bunch of little ones. And then everything else is the same after this, the alarms, we haven't done anything with, and the data tags are just all the math calculations and number inputs that we do. The other options we have, if, we can actually import backlog data, so if I wanted to go back ten years, I could put in all that data, and we'd have it all in here. We could have a historical record this way, because I know Mary and I were looking at how long we needed to keep sewer plant documents, and it was what, seven years after the plant closed? Or something like that, or some of them?
Some of them, yeah.
Oh goodness.
So.
Wow. I didn't think that.
Yeah, so you just keep them, and like, that's the problem, is we have a mountain of paper here for just those records, we have a mountain of paper down at the sewer plant. And with this, it saves it all to the cloud within the program, you can export it in its own little report. So you can go to reporting, and they did just a, a generic one to show, and I don't know if we'll have it in time here, but.
And how many times has Mike come and said, can you look at this company and find this invoice for this pump that we purchased?
And with this too, there's a spot to put in.
When we bought it, and.
Invoice, a picture of the invoice of when you bought it.
I was gonna ask that, since our, your media library could include that.
Yep, and that should be coming to me as a report, it actually, it exports everything as an Excel spreadsheet. And you pick and choose what data you want, because sometimes we don't report all the data that we put in our round sheet, whether it goes to DOH, it's a different form, for DEC, it's a different form. So you can pick and choose, and have it imported to an Excel file. And then with the Excel file, you can have it set up to automatically input to your form that we're using, and you just send the form off every month. And something like this, we kind of talked about the town having a little more visibility possibly too, having their water guy in the loop with this, being able to see it, not edit things, but be able to see what's going on, if he has questions of chlorine residuals for the day, he's always asking me that, so we can come in here and see all of that. And it might help us from, instead of taking all the extra time to send a separate report, they may even be able to report their own.
Yeah.
And they have their own data to pull as well. So there's other options we can serve with that. And with, actually, this was a good one, the assets, like Mary was asking about the. There's so many tabs in here, and I was kind of overwhelmed at first, but once you use it for even a couple of days, it's organized really nicely. And if we wanted to, we could barcode every pump, every asset that we have, and you could just scan it, and it would pull up in here. So inventory wise, it also kind of helps that.
Yes, bar fix that, sorry, Mark.
Yeah.
I really have no idea how many pumps we have.
Right, yeah.
Every time we get one fixed.
So this section here that I have, it's blank right now, because I don't have the information. It's purchase details, so it's order number and purchase order number. And you can upload the receipts for everything, and it's all underneath the asset details page, so it's all in one spot. Just some things we haven't gotten to yet, with, we want to use it for a short time so far. But pretty much, that's an overview of everything. The other page that I passed out is the current quote that we're working on, they're looking at three sixty per month.
Is that both plants?
That is both plants.
Okay.
Originally, they sent me the quote with each plant separate, and it was like, it was exactly double that price per month. So I talked to them, and they actually combined both plants into one subscription for us, knowing our situation. And they are also looking at trying to get us connected for free. They're trying to figure that out, because it'd be kind of like, when we get connected, your subscription would get upped. But then there's also the one-time fee of them coming in to add their modules to our system so they can connect to it. But they're talking about trying to get us those modules, that one-time thing, just installed for free for us. And there's a program that they're going to enroll me into that, it's like once a month or once every other month, where we sit down, we have like a Google Meet call or like a, just some sort of online call, and we get feedback of what's working, what's not working, what could be done. And they actually give incentives for doing stuff like that, so they give like money off, or they do certain things like that. They actually asked me to join a webinar in September to kind of explain how we've used it so far, and how we like it, and what we're getting from it. A lot, a lot, right now, we're getting a lot of time back from it, and we're getting a lot of organization out of it. It's really the, the main key factor that I've been trying to, because just starting out and not having any documentation, everything was either lost, or nobody knew. That was, it was tough, and now that I've got a lot of the phone numbers, I'd like them to all be in one spot, and all this information all in one spot, so if somebody can just log in and get what they need. And we'd be a lot better off. And then if somebody comes in from DEC and wants to see everything from this date to this date about this part of the plant, it's all in one spot, and it's all easily searchable. And I know Mike brought up the good point of, well, what happens if the website goes down, or if their program goes down? That's why they let us export everything, so like on a monthly basis, I would export everything anyways, because there is. Um, that's why they let us export everything, so like on a monthly basis, I would export everything anyways, cause there is documentation we send out monthly to DEC, DOH, and even to the town. Um, I would actually keep it saved on the desktop computer and actually save it on a flash drive or um, an external hard drive, so we actually have redundancy cop, redundancy of copies rather than just one copy of everything sitting in a filing cabinet. And that way, this way is feasible if the website goes down, we still have all of our data. Or if something happens to the flash drive, the data is still somewheres out, or if the computer dies, which the computers we were using have died. So, we lost some data in that process, but we went in this case. But uh, I think that's pretty much everything I have to present. I mean, I know, I'm sure there's probably a lot of questions with it and I can answer some of them, and if I can't, I, I know a guy that can. And uh, there's always the option of getting a, the demo that was given to me. I was told we can schedule a demo for any time if people want more in-depth details, better than I can give, so.
Probably a good point to start right now, everything, all the new stuff that's going in sewer plant.
That way, fresh data tags can just be put in. And every single pump that's in the system right now, it took probably three months just to find out what was in, because either nobody knew or the guys disagreed on what was in there. And it's hard to get a quote for an update on a station when you don't know what's in there, because they don't know how to build it.
Would be really tough.
So the new stuff coming in, you put it all in as, in the asset list. And you put in serial numbers and everything, cause when you go to order replacement parts or a replacement pump, first thing usually asked for is serial number, and a lot of times we have to pull the pump just to find out what it is. So, and that puts us down, it takes time, so. Anything other than that.
And you're going to do this presentation for the town?
Yep, I've already talked to Tom, he said the next board meeting is
In September.
In September, and he said I'm more than welcome to go.
Because part of this would be under operations maintenance, I think.
Yep, it would be probably
The water.
Because we're combined in one, it would be the price on that sheet divided in half would be water and sewer and then whatever the
The percentage, right, so they, yeah, according to our agreement, it's gotta be uh, agreed upon.
Yeah, especially if we are gonna share it with them.
Yeah.
At least, so they could see the data and more transparency is in some cases good, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Great job, yeah.
Any other questions?
We explained it really well.
Well, you did really good.
No, I think it's gonna be a great asset.
Yeah, once it gets flushed out and in everywhere, it'll be a lot better, we're, like, we're taking baby steps right now.
Well, yeah, but everything takes time, and it's
But in the end, you'll have it all done.
Yeah.
It's great.
Yeah.
How far are you?
Yeah.
You know, it hasn't been a year yet.
Yeah, yeah, less than a year.
Uh, when do they want an answer by? I know you said they're putting a little pressure on you, because you've used the free one for quite a while now.
We've been using the free version for like four months and for the last month or so, they've been asking, hey, have you got this approved yet, have you got this approved? And I told them the date of the, the board meeting and like, they sent me text messages the day before. And they're like, hey, good luck, just let us know, and they are really looking for an answer.
Do you really think the town is gonna disapprove, I mean?
I don't think so, but they have to, you know, they have to have their input.
I've talked to them about it, kind of like I've talked to you a little bit, when I see them out about, I let them know what's going on.
Yeah.
Um, that I've been working on it and really, compared to another program, there's another program we looked at that was about twelve hundred dollars a month. So, and that was only for one plant. So with the break they're giving us with the possibility of other incentive programs and being a part of the webinars and things like that, they're working with us quite a bit and they actually wanna help us.
Well, I think, you know, I shouldn't speak for the board, but I think you can tell them tomorrow the presentation went well and you got a positive response.
Now, would, would, to, say, say if, you know, with all the water main breaks and all that, would that be something that we could store somewhere to, all the data on that?
Yeah.
And hydrants, you know, what's done with hydrants and?
So what we can do, we're at the water treatment plant as it is anyways, what I could do here is create an asset list, cause like right now, we've got just, these are all pumps that are at the, the water plant. I can add a section for hydrants. And as long as the data cap that we have allows us to put that many points in, we can add it's gonna be kind of like a similar program that I know Mike has been working with with tracking.
Yeah.
And locations. Um, but we can, even if we don't pinpoint where they all are, we can list out the numbers. Cause all the hydrants are numbered and we can put a maintenance schedule on all of those as well. So if we wanna do that, that way, we can track it, and then the water main breaks, we can um do the same thing, we can actually utilize the library for that, so every time we give out boil water order paperwork and a certificate, I can hand it out and also upload it in here. So we have record of every single one of them.
Yeah.
Which, I do save them on a flash drive, but having them in here too would be
Just have it, everything in one spot.
Yeah, that's the big thing I'm excited for is, rather than digging through the bookshelf I have for an hour to find one piece of paper, go in here, search for it and you're done.
Yeah, yeah, that's fantastic. I do have a good question.
Yeah.
Um, if for whatever reason, you utilized this for several years and for whatever reason, you decided to go off of this program, is that data still ours?
Yes, cause uh, every month I would have it already pulled off of here, so it'll store it. The data that's probably in the cloud for this,
Yeah.
They would probably just wipe it, but we already have the couple redundancies. Yeah. And kind of a good rule of thumb for keeping things like that is, I could keep the flash drive on me. And we could keep another separate flash drive or hard drive here at the office, because if, heaven forbid, something happens at one of the other plants or a, a car gets run over, you still have the data somewheres out. Rather than keeping it all in the same place. And if it told me that we have, it did not. Sometimes when you do the uh export, it takes a little while before it actually um it'll send you a email saying it's ready, and then it'll get like a notification in the app that says um, your download is ready. But sometimes with how much data is in each one, it can take a little bit of time, but then it actually pulls open an Excel, it's not an Excel spreadsheet, but it's laid out the same as one, and you can input all the data into an Excel spreadsheet. So really, with that too, we do, every day we sit down and we manually type in everything, so we write things down, then we type them in, then we take them off of that, we copy and paste them into another document. Whereas this, we can instead of writing everything down by hand and then typing, you just type it in, at the end of the month, you export it into your Excel file and it automatically populates all of the um the mandated reporting you have to do, like the form we send to that I send to you every month, or the form that I send to Department of Health or DEC. Well, it just automatically populated and we can just email it from there. And we're working on a spot to put our lab results in too. We'll have record of all, probably in the media library, we'll have all of our lab results saved. A lot more work to be done, but we're, we started at a good spot.
Yeah, well, that's, that's pretty amazing.
I thought so too, it blew my mind when they gave me the presentation, what it does.
Yeah.
And what it can do when you utilize the full scope of it all.
All right, any other questions from the board?
No, I mean, I know, like you, you said that they're, they want a response about, you know, us purchasing this program. Um, would be, maybe you have to go to town, it won't be till September, should we try and move forward this meeting to, you know, as compared to waiting till our next meeting?
I think we have to see what the town wants, because that's part of our, our agreement with the, particularly with the water plant.
And they've been pretty good working with me with it, so if I tell them that this went well, that we just have to present it one more time to the next step, I think they should be okay with it. And if, if they're not, I can let you know and see what happens.
I can talk to them too, I mean, government is just slow.
Yes.
Yep, exactly. Yeah.
Well, thank you, Kevin.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Excellent.
Get out of your hair for me. Let there be light.
That's all right. I obviously have to read just.
And what's nice as well is it'll have individual logins for different people. So, there's kind of more accountability.
Yeah, yeah, you'll, yeah, right.
On all, on all parts, so it's not just
Right.
Same thing with the water plant, there will be um separate logins and more secure logins than what's currently in place.
So if someone does some action, they would log in and you'd know who?
Yes.
Yeah.
On like the dashboard of Ops Control, it actually lists out a um, everything is timestamped. So the minute you, you submit it, each individual line you put in is timestamped with the date and the time. So you know who did what at what time and what plant and what location, so it's very trackable for everything.
So, everyone's accountable, not that they aren't now, but
Right, it adds an extra level.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay if you want, but you don't have to.
Incredibly warm in this room.
Yeah. I'm just gonna let Kevin get out of here.
Get out of your way.
No rush.
Put your table back for you too, so.
Oh, you can leave that, it's fine, we can get it later. No problem.
All right.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
See you tomorrow.
Right now.
Yep. You've done a good work.
Thank you. See you all there.
Bye.
Uh, report from the code enforcement officer, you have um, Chris Tott's report. Oh, you don't?
Nobody has it.
Yeah, I have it. I will make up, I will make up. I'm sorry, I thought that he gave it to everyone.
I don't think he ever does.
He left it on my desk and I must not realize. Let's wait for that to come back. Uh, speaking of um code enforcement though, um, he also is looking at software program which will replace some of the paperwork that we have. Um, store information, similar to, to what Kevin was showing us, and he'll be coming to probably the next meeting to talk about that. And the town is also very interested in implementing that. Um, thanks, Mary. So he has also been very, very busy.
We've got some trees down at the school.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah.
Looks like it just split.
Yeah, yeah, Kevin was subbing my library, she was, I just watched a tree fall.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
They, they did move along yesterday.
Oh, did they?
The day before, yeah.
That on um, on South Street, I saw him there the other day with the wheelbarrow, but I didn't see any movement of the
There's a lot of that.
Of the rubbish.
Yeah.
Twelve EV chargers.
Mm-hmm. I don't know.
Now, is that specific to Tesla or is that any, any car?
I think it's, I think it's any EV car. Is it only Tesla?
I think so, I think the plugs are for the Teslas.
Oh. I didn't know if they were universal plugs and all.
Look it up, I, I would be surprised.
I did see a car charging downtown today though.
Did you? I'll have to check tomorrow morning.
Yeah.
Someone did call the other day asking when the fork will be working.
But we don't, but, you know, I've looked for the past month, there was three days that somebody was there charging out of a month. We have one that's working.
I mean, most of the, I mean, that's sufficient.
Yeah.
So you have, so they're supposed they don't normally charge other cars, but there's an extension that can be put on the plug to make it work for other cars.
Would have to get
And probably the car owners know that, so that they probably get a hold of that.
Was there like a dock, like a port that goes in that?
Oh, okay.
It's like universal.
I mean, I would, I would hope that other ones could charge too, seeing more and more vehicles.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I saw like six of them a couple of weeks ago in Sands Park, I mean, that's the most cars I've seen at the their charging stations at one time.
Usually see, even at very good, yeah, very good mall, there's not many.
Any questions that you'd like me to ask Chris?
No.
I don't think there's anybody in that um, in that apartment or whatever, down here below the hill. I haven't seen any lights or any vehicles there.
Which apartment is that?
Um.
Next to the vacant lot.
Yeah.
Oh, the old, right in town.
I haven't seen that either.
Yeah, next to the green house.
Anyone?
The yellow building.
Oh.
I haven't seen any in a while.
No, I'm not talking about the yellow building, no, I'm talking about across from the condemned house. Just below the hill here.
Oh, yes, there's nobody there.
No.
No, no.
Oh, the white one on the right?
Yeah, I haven't seen, you know, cause he was adamant that he was gonna
Right.
Somebody was moving in, but
Yeah, I don't think there's anyone there. All right, if there are no questions, we'll go on. Um, do my report next. Uh, good evening and welcome to the Village of Champlain Board of Trustees' August meeting. It certainly has been a rainy summer. Fortunately, uh, we were able to have three uh summer concerts, however, the straw hatters had to be canceled and uh, has not been rescheduled. They said that they will be back next year. Um, I do thank all who attended the concerts and a big thank you to Nikki who arranged the food trucks to be present, thank you. There will be no Village Fest this month, as we have done in the past, we are busy organizing the village's one hundred and fiftieth birthday celebration. And ask all of you to save the date of September twenty-third from nine until five. There will be a program, kids activities, businesses and agencies with displays, food, music, a cornhole tournament, lots of fun. Look for a detailed schedule on our website soon and on our Facebook page in the next week or so. Uh, as many of you know, we have been working on replacing some of the waterline mains on the village streets. We went out to bid on this project, but had to reject the single bid due to cost. We're going out to bid again in September and hope to award the bid in early fall with a start date in early spring. The Town of Champlain with the two villages of Champlain and Russus Point have developed a new website which will attract more people to our area to visit, live and work. This is an important collaboration between the three municipalities as we work together to promote our beautiful region. I encourage you to check out the website, www dot townofchamplain dot com. Finally, once again, we are having the poutine challenge. You can find the paperwork on the town website. As you visit the various restaurants to enjoy their poutine, please get your passport stamped and turn it in to the Town of Champlain office. The first twenty who complete the challenge will receive a free t-shirt and all will receive a certificate. May you all enjoy the last weeks of summer and let's hope we have plenty of sunshine coming our way. Now, I wrote that report last week with all pertinent information, but now I have an addendum. So, add it on to my report. Last night's concert drew over two hundred people. Two hundred plus people came to hear the Thompson Road Tuesday Band. Ron Gregoire, Rick Lavancher, Frank Mercaldi, Laurie Mercaldi, Jeff Winnick and Donald Supri, Supernov. A group of local talented musicians who left their basement practice room and came to the park. And what a show they put on. I told them at the end of the performance that we wanted to pay them. They hemmed and hawed about accepting money. So I asked them to discuss it and call me today. Ron called today and said they don't want any payment, preferring instead that it go to the food shelf or another local need. He described, Ron described how he felt in Bill Earl Park. Named after the man Bill Earl, who fed and watched over so many of the children, including Ron's father and the other Gregoire siblings. With such strong ties to the history of this village, the band prefers that the money be donated. The fact that a man born in eighteen sixty-seven and died in nineteen forty-three is still influencing good deeds one hundred years later speaks volumes about the people in this village. I often give presentations about projects and events that go on here in the Village of Champlain and I'm usually asked, tell us about the Village of Champlain. Here's what I say. The Village of Champlain is filled with good people. We may not have a lot, but what we do have is a spirit of community. And that was evident last night. Thanks Ron, Lori, Frank, Rick, Jeff and Sube. You represent the best among us. Thank you. Yeah, that needed to, that needed to be said, that was absolutely incredible.
So. Yeah.
Not only their generosity, but the fact that the entire area, and it's not just village residents, came together to support
Yeah, always people.
Local talent.
Mm-hmm.
Local people.
Yeah.
Great to know.
Nice.
Yeah. Um, okay, reports from the trustees, Nikki, you wanna go first?
Okay, um, in July, we held two more fun runs, um, we only had a few kids at each, so this year again wasn't well ran.
No pun intended.
Yep, um, but we do have a celebration coming up this Sunday to celebrate four runners who have participated in most of the events, so, um, that'll be a fun little hour activity. Um, the, I put the uh, sensory garden on hold because the weather hasn't been great and I have not had any other volunteers with that, so the work that I am trying to get done on my own time has not been what I want to do either.
Well.
I just don't have the time.
Well, we have so much time.
Yeah, um, but it will eventually get done. Um, so it's a slow process again. Um, the library is going to be holding a carnival on September seventeenth from one to four. Um, hopefully the weather is nice and we can have it all outside. Um, so it'll be, you know, the kids could come and play games to fill like a quarter or ticket. So it's a little mini fundraiser for the library itself. And it's something fun to get the community together and see the library and hopefully have some more patrons join us. Uh, we're talking about starting up a story hour again in October. Um, every week I believe, on Saturdays. Uh, we're in the process of talking about a few more programs, um, again, the senior planet will be held. We are in the very early stages of that, there are new courses that are coming out, so, um, our our teachers have to learn the program or the courses and go through it and then select based on what they have heard from seniors, what they're looking for. Uh, so we will get that information out as soon as we have that, um, set up. And it may be held at senior housing.
Well, he's just pointing, mentioning that sort of.
Yes, we have talked with the manager there a few times and they do have internet in their community room and
Mm-hmm.
she did say she wouldn't mind public coming in and would help out the seniors there, so they wouldn't have to kind of what, um, ride over or miss the information, so. We're working on that.
Good.
That's it, yeah.
Great, thank you. Chuck?
Uh, I don't have a lot, but uh, I just would like to speak with the public about attendance to our uh centennial or Suska Centennial Anniversary and uh we'd like to have more response from our community about attending and having maybe a booth set up or something like that. So far, we haven't had that much response. Uh, this, this is something that's really important, it's a, quite an anniversary for the village and uh I thi- I think people should really try and be involved. It's, it's important to the village and the people itself. So, please respond and let us know if you can attend, set up a booth or whatever, but it'd be nice to have good turnout for this. And that's pretty much what I have for tonight.
Thank you. Joel?
Yeah, I suppose I can just echo what uh, what Chuck is saying, it's definitely a hundred fifty years is a long time to be around and, you know, just the village being around for a hundred fifty years is definitely a significant. Thank you Janet, cause you're definitely a very important part of that, at least in the recent history. Um, I only really have cornhole news. Um, so I was kind of brainstorming on what's sort of surprise, I don't know if I should say this publicly, cause I don't wanna ruin the surprise, but I have sets.
We don't ruin the surprise.
Okay, so then maybe we can talk in the back or something and approve, I don't, do we pay for spending or how do we, how are we going to pay for that? Um, I think like a hundred bucks for everything, um.
Make for, for, for winners on?
Yeah, for, well, combined total of all the stuff that, that I would think, and then I was also thinking about getting like um, stickers for people, pretty, pretty much anybody who plays. Um, my thought process was like two different sets of stickers, one being like I played in cornhole for the hundred fifty years celebration and then another one with the, the Champlain logo and then just saying a hundred fifty years Village of Champlain or something to that effect, and I'll send it to everybody before we print them out, but, you know, um I mean, they could be bumper stickers, they could be on the back of your phone, whatever people, water bottles, whatever people wanna put in, it's just kind of a nice little advertising
Yeah.
Advertising thing for, um, the village and just anybody who came. Um, and then, so I'll coordinate with Janet, yeah, I'm sure you'll give me access, I, I think I already have access to the Village of uh, Champlain Facebook page, so my mindset is to post everything there and then direct everybody there, just cause that works nicely for any future events that we decide to have. Um, so within the coming weeks, um, we're, you know, approaching a month now, September twenty-third, noon is gonna be the cornhole tournament. Um, we'll post uh, a flyer on the Village of Champlain Facebook page, I'm also gonna print up physical flyers, I'll post them at the hospital or wherever I can think of, there's probably local places here. And I would imagine people, if you're saying that two hundred people came for the, you know, event last night, I'm, I'm sure there'll be people coming from um, quite a ways away, so I'll try and get as many flyers out there, I'll print them out and I'll leave some in the office here so that if you guys can think of places to leave them that um, you know, I'll just have the name of the event, the time, the day, where to go and hopefully get as many people as possible, so encouraging the people all um, all post it and basically just letting everybody know when, where, how to get there, blah blah. And then, just have people comment, um, if they have a partner, if they wanna participate, if they don't have a partner, we can always, you know, match up people who don't have partners, so if people wanna come in, we can make teams and figure everything out, and then if you don't see the Facebook thing, you just happen to show up on the day and you wanna play, then we'll also take people to sign in too, I have it all printed out. Um, so it's very simple and just plug and play and add people in and we could just, you know, I can take as many people as there are, so, you know, anywhere up to two hundred people, if we have two hundred people, then that would be amazing. Uh, we might be there cornhole all night, but
We'll get some lights out.
Could be worse, yeah.
Yeah, we'll have to set some lights off, yeah.
Um, so yeah, that's uh, that's just about it. Um, trying to think again of uh, what would specify, just different ideas of giving people surprises, um, so yeah.
Well, we have some, we have some money in what normally we call the Village Fest.
Yeah, oh, and the, the bags too, um, I know Kim was, you got them?
We have those.
Okay.
Yeah, we have bags.
We have everything.
So we need the prize money and other things that, whatever we're gonna get.
Perfect.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think we can afford that, right Juanita, we have money in that category.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, is that it?
So that's about it, yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Oh, and the roads are nice. Roads are beautiful actually.
The roads?
They are.
Paper roads.
Oh, yes, yes.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I was also really like the striping.
It's like you're Yeah.
It's just off the streets.
Right, yeah.
It's like you're on a UFO, it's like you're floating.
It's just so great.
It's just a safe.
Clean.
Um, alright, report from the clerk treasurer?
Everyone has their um, expense and revenue reports for July again, but.
What you need?
I'm looking for my thing from for the additional for the water and sewer project.
This one?
Yeah, I went, I got mine emailed after the year.
Nikki can just pass it down, she and I can share.
I think I have it for her.
Oh, give me a second.
Okay, so, okay, um, that's the expense and revenue, oh, we can do this after the
Yeah, yeah, let's do that.
Okay, so, now on the warrant. So are we going to do a cash for the donation?
Yeah, so how, how can we, what are, are our options?
For the food shelf? So the
At least that way.
We can't make it out to them because then she has the sendage prospect.
Right.
But we could make it out to cash and then um, get her gift cards.
Okay.
Um.
Okay, so that would suffice. Yeah, is that, that's done outside of this, that's all, or is that?
We'd have to add, yeah, we'd have to add that, yeah.
You can have to add it to us. Okay. Um.
So, so we would have, so our warrant, our additional invoices for the warrant would be four thousand three hundred and fifty-one seventy-four.
Wait, say that again, whoops.
Four thousand three hundred and fifty-one seventy-four.
Let's just add your five.
Five hundred.
Six. Okay. Are we doing five or?
We had talked about six.
Yeah.
Sorry, no, but.
Whichever.
Right now.
What's that?
That's
Yeah, that's, that's six.
I don't know, you did that math a lot faster than I did, even though it was bad.
I didn't even really do it.
Oh.
Okay, so yeah, we did the six.
Yeah.
So a total warrant would be sixty-eight thousand five forty-two eighty-six.
Eighty-six, okay. Alright. Uh, so we first need a motion to add that additional amount to the warrant or not?
Well, you don't have to, cause then we just add it, we're, no, so we're just, we have additional invoices for the warrant of four thousand three hundred and fifty-one seventy-four and a total warrant of sixty-eight thousand five forty-two eighty-six.
Okay. Okay, alright.
Yeah. Sure.
Yeah, yeah, oh.
I was just gonna make a motion
Go ahead.
For the adjusted amount sixty-eight thousand five forty-two eighty-six.
Yes, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion on anything on this, any questions?
I think that's very generous.
It's extremely generous of them.
Yeah.
And it was from the heart, it really was.
And of course, us being in here, we know how
Mm-hmm.
How needy it is right now, she knows a lot of people coming in there.
Yes. Yes, there's a, there's a big need, there's a big need for, for food. And that's, that would go a long ways. Any other discussion on, on this? Local?
Trustee Malinsky.
Hi.
Trustee Connor.
Hi.
Trustee Herzog.
Hi.
Mayor Petrich.
Hi. Okay, now we've got the
Oh, wait a minute.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, okay, so we have two invoice, uh, we have invoices for the waste, for the water line replacement project. Um, Barton and La Judas, eleven thousand four forty-eight fifty-eight, do we do them together?
No, we do them separately, so let's take that one first, may I have a motion to pay this one?
Some more.
Is that a second, second? Okay, uh, discussion. Alright, local?
Trustee Malinsky.
Hi.
Trustee Connor.
Hi.
Trustee Herzog.
Hi.
Mayor Petrich.
Hi.
Um, we have two invoices for the wastewater treatment plant disinfectant. Barton and La Judas, sixty-seven thousand two forty-seven fifty-one and Paris Escavating, five hundred and fifty-five thousand one hundred and ninety dollars and seven cents.
We have a motion. You, okay, second?
Sorry.
That's alright.
Big number, money.
Any, any, well, yes, it is, it is a lot of money, but we're, we're, we're progressing at the wastewater treatment plant.
But is it Paris, Paris's is all done, isn't it, like we did Paris's?
Yes. Yes, I believe so.
Yeah, so, okay, finish, okay, we had it first and the second.
Okay. Any, any questions or discussions?
No, it's a report that's already been done?
Yes, yes, yeah, yes.
Yeah.
I have the dates on the front of, like, Paris's was from May to August.
Yeah. Okay, local?
Trustee Malinsky.
Hi.
Trustee Connor.
Hi.
Trustee Herzog.
Connor.
Mayor Petrich.
Hi.
Okay, now the wastewater treatment plant, right now, there is a hold on that. I was told it was off, but I got another email and I guess it's the back, back in Barton and La Judas's hands, as to what's going on, so.
Oh.
Cause I still haven't paid last month's because I haven't gotten the funds yet.
Okay.
But it has something to do with, I think, some reports that
That aren't in yet?
That, yeah, some, some compliance.
Okay.
Has nothing to do with us.
Okay, alright. Okay, thanks Juanita, thanks for the great job, that's always. Uh, report from the superintendent, um, I've got his report. They've done a little bit, a little bit of flushing. Had two water main breaks the same day. The sewer plant, it's coming along. A lot of uh, a lot of things to line up to, to get cleaned out and ready to move to the next stage, but it's moving forward now.
And Kevin is really working wonderful with.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's the way, everything's digital now, everything computerized and
Yeah, and, and Kevin and Robert work very well together, um, you know, so it's, yeah, it's uh, there's a lot of cooperation among everyone. Um, as Joel mentioned, the, the newly paved streets look awesome. And the striping's really, really pretty.
And the playground looks good?
And the pla- yes, the playground looks good. Uh, it's been a rainy year, so it's hard to keep up with the mowing, you know, they do the best they can. They did a great job on the bike path that had been severely eroded, it's much, much better now.
Uh, Mike will speak to you about that, I spoke to him regarding bills that we received and, um, he'll discuss.
Yeah. Okay, perfect. Uh, they did do some more flushing today, um, and they're looking on the vault. And uh, there's always a lot of work to do, so, to all of the DPW crew, I say, thanks. Sincere thanks. I see every day how hard it was. Uh, correspondence?
Um, chips funding information from New York State DOT, um, I just did a disbursement for our, for our payment that we just did of eighty-six thousand dollars. Um, salt reduction grant award of fifteen hundred from Clinton County Soil and Water, Soil and Water. Clinton County Treasurer's second quarter sales tax, charter communications franchise fees.
And the sales tax was up a little bit from last year at this quarter, I believe we said.
Yes, yes, wasn't up a lot, but it was still up.
Yeah. New business, uh, the October meeting, um so normally the October meeting, or sometimes the October meeting falls on Columbus or Indigenous People's Day. Uh, this year we had changed it
Sixteenth?
To the fif-
It was changed to the sixteenth.
Sixteenth, but I can't be here on the sixteenth, so I'm asking if the board would consider changing it to October second.
No, I thought we were gonna do the Tuesday, the tenth.
Oh, oh, we're gonna, oh.
Yeah, the day after.
Yeah, that's right. Yes, the tenth, Tuesday, the tenth.
Because otherwise if we do it the second, then
It's too early.
It's, it's It's ki- it's too early with the bills.
Mm-hmm.
Uh.
So, does a Tuesday work for people or do you have commitments?
That's a venture. Oh, yeah, but.
Are you good with that?
It's all okay, I can, I'll cancel, it's okay.
Oh, you do have a meeting?
Okay, it's a good session.
Oh.
I know that was nice.
Joel, you think it's fine or do you have?
Yeah, it should be good.
Okay, and Kim, I did not talk to her about it, so I'm hoping it's fine.
Well, we still have another month before they change it again.
Okay, so could I have a motion to change it to the tenth?
Actually.
Not good?
Yeah, might not work for me. Mondays are really the only day that I have flocked and stuff.
That's what I was worried about.
Days that I don't have something. I, but it doesn't, it could be any Monday. Uh, it'll take me, I'll have to see when my schedule is coming up to be able to give you an answer for sure, but I'll be in touch.
Should we wait till September?
Yeah, we can check with Kim.
Can I check with Kim?
And then everybody else can check there, or Chuck can check this.
Okay, let's, let's wait then. Let's wait till September.
Well, at least we have it out there.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, Kim did his presentation. We have an amendment to the owner engineer agreement number three, the water main replacement. This is a, this is an increase of twenty-four thousand dollars. It's, uh, related to both the cost to rebid the project because we are going out to bid again. And then it's also an increase due to the, um, adjustments that had to be made for the right of way due to the, uh, DOT, uh, request for, um, different changes and meetings and comments and, so there were some increases in that. So overall, it's, it's an increase of twenty-four thousand dollars. And we have a motion to accept this.
Some more.
We have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? We'll call.
Trustee Malinsky.
Hi.
Trustee Connor.
Hi.
Trustee Herzog.
Hi.
Mayor Petrich.
Hi. Under old business, we have the dog law, uh, I have not gotten the verbiage back from, um, the lawyer. So we can't proceed with that yet. I will email him again tomorrow. And, uh, on the birthday celebration, I think we're doing pretty well. I concur with Chuck that I hope some more businesses and agencies will join us. Let us know soon. I think we've had response from four maybe? Four or five thus far. Um, everything else, I think is moving along. We've got the flyer about ready to go out. Mary made it all for me today. Thank you very much, Mary. Um, so we need to hit the media hard, get the word out. Um, I don't know what you wanna do for the kids' activities, but I know. Cornhole sounds great. Food. That's all being taken care of. The music is all set. The program is coming together. So what are your thoughts, board, are there any gaps?
No, I think just making sure that we get it all neatly wrapped together.
Yeah.
Like in the Facebook page, I'll mention too, foods, food concessions, all that stuff will be there. Um, are we allowing, are people allowed to bring their own stuff, like if they want drinks or whatever?
A little on alcohol, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Um, yeah, sure, other, yeah, regular drinks, sure. Uh, I'm going to do a Facebook event page probably tomorrow or the next day. And then I'll mention cornhole tournament on that. Um, have to reach out to the newspaper and maybe Channel Five and see if we can get some coverage. Scarlet Falls just had their one hundred and seventy fifth. And, uh, they, I, I didn't go, but it looked like a really good time. They had a lot of cool stuff going on. They had fireworks.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I went over to that fire, you know. Yeah. We don't have a place to do that.
There's just not a place in Champlain.
Yeah. That might be dangerous.
Yeah, not to.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I welcome, I, I welcome any suggestions from any of you. Or if you're interested in reading any of the history of past celebrations, it's all on my desk. I borrowed it from the History Center. It's fascinating, yeah. Pretty cool. All right, any other business? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. I think we all agreed. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.